This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Michael Frieden, North Haven's First Selectman, and welcome to our May Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm joined, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Boimy. Thank you for joining us. I'd like to ask everyone to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move into public comment to the agenda, I thought that even though it's not on the agenda, I just want to provide everyone an update. As you all have seen on the news, yesterday was a very chaotic day here in North Haven. And through what was a very unfortunate situation on Quinnipiac Avenue, I was on scene last evening, and it was, if there were any positives to this, it was the public safety first responders that really did an outstanding job here in North Haven. We had over 100 first responders on scene. We had collaboration on mutual aid like I really hadn't seen before. The collaboration involved multiple fire departments, police departments, ATF, FBI, state police, and I was very proud of our two chiefs, Chief Januszewski, Chief Tom McLaughlin, our deputy chiefs, Deputy Chief Mark O'reilly, and Deputy Chief John Mohearn, for the way that they managed the scene, working collaboratively with the other agencies. And throughout the evening last night, we actually made the national news. There were press from all over trying to collect the updates. As we speak right now, the State Police Crime Unit has taken over the investigation. They're handling this now. Sergeant Kelly Grant is in charge. And I wanted to let everyone know that today I went to Yale Hill Hospital to visit our officers. And we had three North Haven officers in the hospital injured last night, and there were other officers from Branford and East Haven that were also injured. By the time I got there with Chief Tom McLaughlin and our police chaplain, Father Michael Santiago, two of the officers had been released from other agencies. And we've visited with all the officers and all the families of the officers, and I was absolutely delighted to see how upbeat and positive the police officers were. In any type of event like that, the injuries can be significant. As I said on the news last night and the press conferences that took place, we are very grateful in North Haven that there were no life-threatening injuries and no fatalities. Last night, ladies and gentlemen, was an example of first responders coming together, multiple towns, multiple agencies, over 100 again first responders, seven to nine ambulances on scene. It really was something to see. In light of that tragedy, there was a positive, and that was the positive. And we are very grateful that our North Haven police officers and firefighters did not have any life-threatening injuries, and our police officers, I'm hoping, will be released this week sometime. So I just wanted to give everyone an overview.
Michael, I was just wondering if you could indulge me for a few minutes? I'd just like to give my little perspective on last night. I spent it typically like most North Haveners at home, watching TV, watching the Yankees. And, you know, I'm about three-quarters of a mile north of the location, and at 8:30 I heard the boom. My house shook like crazy. The cats scattered under the bed, which was probably a prudent decision, and ran outside. All the neighbors were, "What's that? What's that?" There was a lot of confusion, a lot of nervousness, you know, even, and that kind of lends to a little bit of panic when you don't know what just happened. And so we all went back inside, and of course, the internet and, you know, the social media was like all over the place with all sorts of rumors, and I didn't want to pay any attention to that. I just wanted, you know, I pretty much knew some basic facts about what had happened, the standoff, but I wanted to wait for the news to come on at 10 o'clock, and I watched TV9 or whatever at 10 o'clock. And this is why I wanted, I asked for permission to speak, because I just wanted to commend you on how clearly and calmly you presented the facts on TV last night. You know, you had a very precise presentation of the facts. We were all very nervous about injuries and heard all sorts of rumors, so when you announced that none of the injuries were life-threatening, it was like an immediate, you know, release. And you just did an outstanding job in calmly expressing what had happened, and I really appreciated it. I mean, certainly, the big, the heroes of the night were the first responders, and we're all hoping for speedy and full recovery. But I wanted to take this opportunity at a Board of Selectmen meeting to commend you as the leader of the town. I think some of our national leaders could take some lessons in your leadership that you displayed last night. I thought that it was superb how you fulfilled the duties of your office, and I commend you. You know, I was nervous, and you, you know, you're my first selectman too, you know, and so I was very appreciative of the information that you so calmly provided to all of us last night, and I applaud your efforts. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Yes, I mean it. Okay.
I'll second that.
There you go. Motion carries.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Thank you.
Yeah, I think too, and I think, Mike, you can, I think you could speak to this as well as is that. I think I watched, you know, a couple of different channels on TV and everything, and I thought the media did a very good job not getting in the way of the first responders trying to get their job done and not putting out any information that was actually false or inaccurate or, you know, unnecessary in terms of, and I think maybe also because of you and the way that, you know, I think you were able to relate to the media in that.
Well, I just wanted to say, thank you very much, Sally.
Sure.
But I think the most important thing we have to remember, the real heroes last night were just who Sally said, the first responders. Those were the real heroes. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Item number two, any public comments to the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll go to item number three, the approval of the minutes of the Board of Selectmen meeting from April 5th.
I'll move the approval of those minutes.
I'll second the minutes.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number three, approval of the minutes from the, item number four, I'm sorry, of the April 23rd Special Board of Selectmen meeting.
Motion to approve those minutes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Item number five, before we go into executive session to vote, to go into executive session, we will come out of executive session and vote on the issue. Attorney Jeff DiNofrio is here. You know, you may not realize that Jeff has over 25 years of experience in municipal government, particularly in North Haven. He is a great individual and town attorney to tap into his vast historical knowledge of the town of North Haven. Item number five on the agenda predates this administration by about 12 years. So we're going into executive session to get an historical look back on this exact issue that was apparently authorized by the town in 2006, and we will come back and we will update you. And we think this will take no more than 15 minutes, tops. Right, Jeff?
No.
Okay. Can I have, make a motion, someone, to go into executive session?
I'll move that we go into executive session with Attorney Jeff DiNofrio to discuss the item listed in number five of our agenda.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We shall return shortly, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, we're out of executive session, and as far as item number five is concerned, we were provided an historical view of this issue, which actually dated back to 2000. Our town attorney advised, since it's not an action item, we took no action, and we're going to move to item number six. Okay? All right, so item number six. Sally?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Peter A. Tenadyne, 11 Mountain Brook Road, from the Inland Wetlands Commission effective May 1st, 2018.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a resignation letter here. I know Pete very well. Pete, if you're watching, I'd like to thank you very much for your outstanding service on this wetlands commission. The town of North Haven has a great deal of gratitude for what you've done and what you've contributed to that wetlands commission. So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Bill?
Next item on the agenda is a motion to appoint Frank H. Bumstead, 925 Hartford Turnpike, from an alternate on the Inland Wetlands Commission to a full seat, to fill the unexpected term of Peter A. Tenadyne to terminate on December 31st, 2021.
Unexpired.
Oh, I'm sorry, the unexpired term of Peter A. Tenadyne to terminate on December 31st, 2021.
Right. So, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. I just want to say Frank has been to every meeting as an alternate. He understands the dynamics of inland wetlands commissions, so we're happy to have him. If we have to lose Pete, we're happy to have Frank step in. So thank you, Frank. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Sally?
Yes, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Mary Mann, 130 Ezra Street, from the Conservation Commission, term to expire August 31st, 2018.
I'll second that motion.
Mary, I'd like to thank you very much. You've been on that commission for many years. You're a delightful and remarkable lady. We will miss you, and thank you again for your service. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Next, motion to, for the appointment of Robert Lewis, 20 Ridgewood Terrace, to the Conservation Commission, to fill the unexpired term of Mary Mahan, to terminate on August 31st, 2018.
This one I'd like to discuss quickly, if I may, because this is an appointment filling Mary Mann's term that expires in just a few months. We already accepted her resignation. I always thought that when you are filling a term with such a short term to go, that it would follow the same political affiliation. I mean, we just did Mr. Tenadyne being replaced by Mr. Bumstead, similar party, the same party, but that's for filling a longer term. This is just a few months. I don't know if you discussed this with the chairman of the DTC or not. What, I mean, I'm not making a big issue of it, but it just seems for just, for such a short, we're completing an existing term. It's not like filling a vacancy like we did last month with the library. This is a slightly different nuance to it in that it's just completing a few months an existing term, and that's why I thought, but, I mean, to delay it because there's such a short time to go, that's why I'm not making a big deal about it, but I think in the future, when we're filling a term for a relatively short time, it should follow...
And, you know...
Do you understand my distinction?
I do. And that's really what we've done down through the years here. But the interesting part about this is that about three or four months ago, Bob Lewis really wanted to be on this commission. I mean, he actually cited, this is the one that he wanted to be on. So when Bob approached us, of course, we had no vacancies, and when Mary decided to resign, which we were surprised, because Mary's been on it for a long time, we just had, she was the only person available. Now, if you, Sally, you want the option of contemplating it, you know, we respect your point of view, and we'll consider it if you like, and we could actually table it, but this is a man that really wants this commission.
Right. I understand that, and that's why, you know, and I read his resume. He's certainly well-qualified, and my comments are in no way reflective of any question of his qualification or the good job that he would do. It's just that that was always how we had done things, and it just struck me. But why don't we say this, you know, this would get his foot in the door, you know, for me to go back and then another month and another month, it might be June, and then the term would be two months, and I'm not even sure, a lot of the boards and commissions don't meet in the summer.
That's right, yeah.
So, you know, I'm going to, I will respectfully abstain, how about that?
Okay.
With maybe an understanding that next time we fill a spot here that we consider, since we're losing a Democrat, you know, consider that the next time. So why don't we approach it that way?
Okay.
Okay.
That's a fair proposal.
Yeah.
And I appreciate your thoughts on that as well, Sally. And I think, you know, from the standpoint of a conservation commission, I think, you know, it's not a, I like that it's an appointed position, and, you know, and I think by its very nature, you know, but I can understand what you're saying in terms of, but on the other hand, which I think we haven't mentioned yet, which I thought was an important point, is, is that according to the notes we have, Mr. Lewis is an unaffiliated voter.
Right.
You know, and I think, you know, I'd never thought about this before, but, you know, from a fairness standpoint, you know, half the voters in town are not either Democrats or Republicans.
That's right.
So, you know, I think it's, you know, I think, you know, as Mike was saying, based on his interest and the fact that he is qualified and his willingness to serve, you know, you almost hate to, you know, not include unaffiliated voters, you know, which I would feel as well if he was, if we were replacing a Republican.
We have a lot of unaffiliated voters on boards and commissions. That's true. But I'm just saying that historically, when a existing term, this is a resignation, and it's just such a short time, it was usually filled by someone of the same party. So, but I just wanted to make that small point. I'll abstain with that understanding that in the future, we'll try to work something out.
Yes.
It might be a year or two down the line. The positions are staggered, if I recall correctly. Okay, so why don't we just proceed?
All right.
I didn't want to make a big stink.
All right. I accept what you're saying.
Thank you.
So can I have a motion to accept Robert Lewis?
I'll make a motion to accept Robert Lewis, based on the discussion.
Okay, I'll second that. Any other discussion? All right, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Aye.
I'll abstain.
Okay, very good. Now, item number 10, Marvin Wilson. Marvin came to me as an interested town resident who has a great deal of experience in housing at Southern Connecticut State University. So I met with Marvin. We set up a meeting with Marvin, and the chairman of our housing authority was here this evening, Mr. Richard Lopresti, and I had Marvin meet with Richard. And Richard liked him a lot. We like Marvin. He's very interested in this position. We have a vacancy, so we put Marvin on to be appointed tonight. And there was an example, ladies and gentlemen, where the party affiliation was irrelevant to me. We want the best qualified people. He has the background. Rich would agree. You know, the resume's here, so we're proposing Mr. Wilson from 27 Sentinel Hill.
Right, and I think that's appropriate. This is a new appointment. It's not finishing somebody else's term.
Yes.
That's the difference.
All right.
I'll move his appointment.
I was just going to ask, is there a limit to the number of people we can have on our...
Richard? Five. Five.
So we've only had, we've only had four for a while?
Yeah.
Right.
So, okay. No, but, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. So I'll second the motion.
All right. Motion second. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sally?
I'll move the property tax refunds listed in the agenda.
Nothing unusual, anything on those, I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item number 11. Our next meeting is Thursday, June 7th, here at North Haven Town Hall, and now we're at the point, ladies and gentlemen. Item 12, public comment. Mary.
Mary White Summerlane, I have two important topics I'd like to talk about. The first one is relative to fracking. Just to give people a refresher, what is fracking waste and why don't we want it here in Connecticut? So hydraulic fracturing is the process of injecting a fluid consisting of water, standing chemicals, at a high pressure to fracture shale formations to allow gas to flow and be brought into a well for collection, fracking. The process of extracting oil and natural gas using hydraulic fracturing or fracking produces large amounts of liquid and solid waste. Fracking waste can contain a number of pollutants, chemicals, metals, excess salts, and carcinogens like benzene and radioactive materials. Okay, so with that, I'd like to give an update on banning fracking waste in Connecticut. So I spoke with Jennifer Siskind. She's the lady who came on March 1st and spoke to us about the town of North Haven passing an ordinance to ban fracking waste. So currently, on the Senate desk is Senate Bill 103. So we need Senator Len Fasano and other Republicans to support and pass Senate Bill 103 in its original state. So what does that mean in its original state? What happened was powerful oil and gas industry lobbyists have introduced amendments which weaken Senate Bill 103 and actually allow the fracking waste in Connecticut via permits. So we want fracking waste permanently banned in Connecticut, and that's why Senate Bill 103 in its original state must be passed. So in case you don't know, the legislative session is set to end May 9th, so there's not much time. So what can we do? We can help. So we need to have as many people as possible to contact Senator Len Fasano by email or call, if you don't have email. And so I'm going to give you Senator Len Fasano's email. It's easy. So you would email him, and you would tell him and other Republicans to support and pass Senate Bill 103 in its original state, which will permanently ban fracking waste in Connecticut. So you would tell Senator Fasano to protect the public and the environment by passing Senate Bill 103 in its original state. This ban prohibits the receipt, collection, storage, treatment, and disposal of waste from hydraulic fracturing in Connecticut. Let's see. You would include your name, address, contact info, and you would tell him you are a constituent. State Senator Len Fasano serves the 34th District, which includes North Haven. So this is very serious. Fracking waste is radioactive waste. If you are exposed to this, you will probably develop cancer. It will contaminate our drinking water, destroy and kill wildlife, and the environment. States like Pennsylvania want to bring their fracking waste to Connecticut. Imagine if there's a spill on the highway. Imagine the cost to taxpayers to clean up the radioactive fracking waste. Imagine the contamination the town of North Haven would suffer and other towns would suffer. So I'm asking people to please call and Senator, okay, so here, okay, so to call Senator Fasano, you would call his legislative aide, and her name is Tara Frilling, and I'm going to give that number. It's 860-240-8871. You would give your name, address, contact information, and you would say that you are a constituent, and you would tell her the same thing. You would say that you would like, want Senator Len Fasano and other Republicans to support and pass Senate Bill 103 in its original state, which permanently bans fracking waste in Connecticut. Okay, so I have a handout with the number and the email. Tom could just pass it out to everybody? Appreciate it. And so if this Senate Bill 103 in its original state, if it, if it does not pass, the town of North Haven must pass its own ordinance to ban the fracking waste. Okay? Let's see. Okay, so my next topic is, okay, I would also like to say thank you to all the first responders and to the fire chief and the police chief for yesterday. We truly appreciate how you put your lives on the line for us. We can show our gratitude and support for our public safety providers with not just words, but with action. So I've got some updates here. So the fire commission met on Tuesday, April 24th. At this time in 2017, there were 1,372 alarms. Now, it's 2018, there are 1,457 alarms with an increase of 85 alarms. The fire chief reported, since they last met, there were 340 calls for service, 13 highway accidents, and one fire. 64 percent, which is 217.6, of the calls for service were for EMS/ALS. 76 calls were overlapping or simultaneous emergencies, where the one fireman, paramedic on duty, was out on the first 911 emergency call. So those 76 people did not receive a paramedic. Instead, AMR eventually arrived with two EMTs. I don't know how many people died, or I don't know how many people will have their lives cut short because they have, say, permanent damage to their heart, for example. But if even one more person dies, that is one more person too many. So I listened to the fire chief and the union president when they both said, "We need more firemen, paramedics. Any other alternatives will violate the union contract." So I strongly disagree with the statement by a resident who said to hire two firemen, paramedics will be useless. It's like filling a bathtub with a cup of water. There are four shifts, as we know, A, B, C, and D, with each shift having eight firemen, which includes one fireman, paramedic, who all work 24 hours and then have 72 hours off. The union president said they would be flexible. Two new firemen, paramedics can be put on one shift, for example, the A shift. This will mean shift A will have 10 firemen, which will include two firemen, paramedics on that shift. And so 25 percent of the time, there will be two firemen, paramedics on shift. This is not useless. Simultaneous calls for EMS/ALS will be answered, and lives will be saved. Next year, we can hire two more firemen, paramedics, who can go on, say, shift B. This will mean 50 percent of the time, there will be two firemen, paramedics on shift, and then two the following year, and then it'll be 75 percent of the time, there'll be two firemen, paramedics on shift, and so on. To not add two firemen, paramedics this year is a mistake. And instead, just to have this committee, I understand, Mike, you're trying to compromise, but to have the committee meet and discuss labor alternatives that will violate the union contract, I don't see the point in that. So I asked the Board of Finance now, and then on May 7th, to transfer to the fire department that $140,000, which is in the separate budget line item. This means only $110,000 more are needed to hire two firemen, paramedics, and $110,000 equals .0387 mils. That, ladies and gentlemen, with thousands of households and many businesses in town, is just a few dollars more in taxes. These firemen, paramedics represent a critical need, life and death. So I asked the residents in town to speak up and tell the Board of Finance, "You want to hire two firemen, paramedics this year." In addition, on April 21st, on News 8, Mark Davis reported that there's one-time extra revenue. An unexpected windfall of money has come into the state. The governor wants to sock it away in the rainy day fund, but the Democrats want to spend it on care for kids, elementary ed, higher ed, funding for the Medicare savings plan, which was 130 million, and they want to restore money for municipal aid. Republicans also proposed restoring the Medicare savings plan... Republicans also proposed restoring the Medicare savings plan and municipal aid by cutting elsewhere. Republicans say new, certain new programs in the Democratic budget, like free tuition at community colleges for needy students, is a good idea, but it is not affordable now. The state is strapped, and it will have increasing consequences in future years. So we are not sure who will win in the spending or not of the millions of dollars of one-time unexpected revenue. If North Haven receives unexpected money for municipal aid, I'm assuming it would be the MRSA money. I would ask that the money be moved to the public works budget as it must. Then, can the money that was allocated to the public works budget, can that be moved to the capital where the two fire apparatus requested by the chief can be put back in the budget in a lease-to-purchase? Okay, as we know, the fire apparatus engines are older, are older than 25 years of age, some of them. They are breaking down. Some of them do not have parts available to fix them. One engine is being used as a taxi. Uh, let's see. Okay, so clearly, these old fire apparatus that are still on the road and breaking down represent a public health and safety hazard. So I'd like to conclude by again asking the residents in the town to speak up and tell the Board of Finance, "You want to hire two firemen paramedics this year." We can afford it, since we only need $110,000 more, which is only .0387 mils. Remember, we have the $140,000 in a line item in the budget, and two firemen paramedics cost $250,000. And as a reminder, I'm asking everybody to please help permanently ban the radioactive fracking waste in Connecticut by emailing Senator Len Fasano at len.fasano@cga.ct.gov and call him at 860-240-8871 and tell him and other Republicans to support and pass Senate Bill 103 in its original state to permanently ban fracking waste in Connecticut.
Thank you, Mary. Any other comment?
I wasn't going to speak to this, but since this started, if you remember, about six months ago, I proposed that we have two, I'm sorry, fire technician, emergency service people, medical people. And it was shot down by many people in the town. One of them was the union leader, who stood right there and said, "That will never happen as long as I'm the union steward," which I didn't like. Mary was against it. She spoke against that at many meetings. And now we've wasted six months. We're going to have a study for another six months on what to do. I don't think that's right. I think you guys can make a decision in less than six weeks. When you appointed me, when I was voted chief, what do you call it, chairman of the senior tax relief program, I was given four weeks, four meetings, to come up with a solution. And we had seven or eight people in that, and we did that in less than four weeks. I think you guys can do this in a lot less time because you do have all the basics, you have the knowledge, and you should be able to just push it right through.
Yeah, and I'll turn over aside, but you're absolutely right, Sherman. This should not suggest that it's going to take six months to make a decision, but the dollars are allocated in the second half of the fiscal year. A decision could be made in two weeks, but it wouldn't start until January 1st to save the saved money.
Why can't you start it now? You appropriated that $140,000 in your contingency fund, and then you moved it back out. So you had, you had the money in the budget. You just moved it around. It's there. We're going to vote on this.
Yeah, I mean, the committee will look at that. I'm not sure $140,000 is going to cover two paramedics with the cost, the insurance, the 401K match. I mean, there's other, there's other costs in here. It's not just salary.
Oh, I understand that, yeah.
So, and the paramedics, you know, they're a specialized breed, so I don't know if $140 is enough for two.
It could take you six months to find them, to hire them, after you make a decision.
Well, that was the other reason why the funding was going to start in January. But even with that, Sally, you want to say something?
Well, you know, I fully supported at the last Board of Finance meeting when this committee issue came up. And I thought it was a good idea. And I, it was my understanding that the mission of this committee was more than just looking at hiring more people. It was looking at other factors that could improve medical response time. Am I wrong to assume?
No, you're right.
That there, it's going to be, it's a much more comprehensive mission. And that's why I suggested that perhaps one of the volunteer leaders be incorporated into it, because I think they're, based on my research that I've done, there could be greater utilization of volunteers that might increase their numbers. But I also think that there's some dispatching issues. There's a lot more than just hiring that this committee is going to look at. It's not just deciding what will fit into an existing or a new fire contract. So that's why I support the comprehensive nature of, you know, you can't solve a problem just on one.
You would do it in industry, in business. You would, but you're not doing it in the town. Something I wanted to ask about, we're going to spend approximately $400,000 to do the parking lot here in the center block?
That's a grant, Sherman.
That is a grant.
The state.
Okay, that's what I wasn't sure of. The other thing is, I'm totally in favor of providing a safe and secure public school environment here. I want, we should do all possible to keep the kids safe. We have one school resource officer, and that cost is shared by the Board of Education and the Police Department. Now, you understand we're going to put on four more?
Well, what we're looking at, Sherman, is a comprehensive plan of school security. That would involve potentially adding a school resource officer in all the elementary schools, in the middle school, in addition to the one in the high school. There are some issues we have to really look at in terms of pension, 401K. If it happens, we would go to the public, call a town meeting, and the money would have to be appropriated from the fund balance. It would be 182 days a year to mirror the school system. We are looking at that. In the age of what we're experiencing, what we see in Florida and other parts of the country, we must do everything we can to do as much as we can for school security. So sometime between now and September, you will have, you will see a town meeting being called to discuss school security with school resource officers potentially in the schools. You support that, Sherman?
Oh, yeah, I do support it. I just, you know, I didn't see anything in the budget for it, and I was just curious where we were going to get that, whatever it is, half a million or so.
The only way we could possibly do it, and the citizens would have to vote on it.
Now, would these have to be full-time policemen, or could they be supernumeraries that we hire?
They would be, they could be retired North Haven policemen, who would be supernumeraries, who would be certified police officers.
Would, I'm just curious, would they come under the union contract also? Or would that be outside of the contract?
That's one of the things we're working on right now with the police chief and with the union. So it, we're, I can't really say too much, but it would be retired North Haven police officers that are still certified.
Okay. Because someone is curious about the pensions and all the other things that we have.
What we're going through right now. So that's, those are the issues. The one you just mentioned, Sherman, the ones I mentioned, pension, 401K, are those issues. But the plan would be to try to enhance school security.
And when do you hope to accomplish this, you think?
I would say that.
For the next school year?
Yeah, that would be the goal. If we can work, if we could solve all of the dilemmas, we would call the town meeting in June, perhaps July, right after the school year, and we would start it, starting in September.
Okay, well, I'm totally in favor of making some kind of headway on this, because as we saw the other night, we're not immune to crazy things. It can happen in any town, small town.
And I'm hoping the parents would get behind that.
I think the parents will get behind it. What choice do you have? Thank you.
The one that we do have, is he in the union, or can you say?
He is, that person is at the high school, and he is a union, yes. He's a union officer, yes.
His cost is split 50/50.
Right, that's exactly right. Do you have a question?
I think, I think exactly as, when you start considering that this is really, knowing, you know, that there's union contracts involved and other complexities, you know, I think that goes back to your, and Sherman, I know you appreciate this. You know, the difference between if this was a private company or a publicly traded company, we could make the decision a lot easier, you know, because I think we'd have real revenue to offset it, and maybe we could make a change, you know, a change sooner if it didn't work out, then later. I think, I think here, just because of the nature of municipal government, it really, I think we want to, we want to make sure we make a good decision, it's a long-term decision. You know, and that, you know, I think that, you know, if it takes another six months or so to make sure we make the right decision, you know, you know, both for the paramedic and the school safety officers, hopefully, hopefully, we, you know, that'll, that'll be accomplished in a way that benefits everybody. I'm sorry, go, Sherman.
That's okay. I hadn't thought of that until you brought something up, but you could eventually go through a private concern to higher security, which would eliminate the need to have a union situation.
That's certainly possible. We are focused in, though, because I think it's very important to have North Haven officers, retired officers, who are part of the community already, to have a presence in the school. And that's kind of what we're looking at right now. And you'll hear more about this, because it's, school security is very important to us here in this administration. You know, folks, just for those watching on TV, I'd love to wave a magic wand and provide everything that everybody wants, but you know, we have to live within our means, too. And all over Connecticut, taxes are the number one issue. I hear it every day. We see it every day in Hartford. And, you know, we took out, we started with $7 million worth of requests in this budget. And you know I was not supporting a 1.71 mil increase. We carved out millions of dollars to get down to a .65. And still, that represents a tax, tax increase. We'll be presenting that Tuesday night. I'm going to support that because it keeps all of the existing services in the town that North Haven's residents have come to expect. But in the end, a government is like a home. We take in so much money, and we can spend so much money. And this is what we're faced with here, with the uncertainty of state revenue, with, we're fortunate that our grant list is still growing. And you've heard me say before, we're trying to build a bridge to a couple of years from now when that flow of income comes in. But we can't spend money that we don't have right now. Once we get the flow of income in, when we fill out some of these economic development projects, we're open to anything, because the model in government should be state government and local government. You only spend what your top-line revenue growth is and delivers. That model keeps the tax mil rate the same, but yet it allows us to reinvest back in the town what we need. The residents of North Haven are not going to accept a significant tax increase. That is my opinion, and I'm out there every day talking to hundreds, thousands of people during the course of the year.
I would agree with that. That's the number one complaint that I hear. And even beyond that, that, you know, you talk about revenue and expenditures, you know, there are plenty of folks that want expenditures reduced and get a break in our mil rate.
Yes, I hear that.
But all the time. And, you know, our budgets have been going up about $2 million a year, and if you look at what the income is that we're anticipating in a couple of years from Amazon, that's not going to help us. Yes, there's stuff that we could do, but besides the new stuff that we could do, we've got these yearly increases all the time, and that's where I think we have to focus our control on. But of course, it's a terrible predicament, because are you going to say no to school security in light of the world we live in? You can't possibly. Who do we have a bigger obligation to protect than the children of the community? It's a tough, it's a tough dilemma. So, but I agree with you that tax increases are the number one complaint that I get, and I don't talk to nearly as many folks as you do.
So you'll see a couple of town meetings coming up. One will address school security, and the committee will be moving forward on the fire issue with the chief, Paul Janushevsky. He will be part of it, offering his expertise to the other committee members.
And let me just say, you said the town meeting is Tuesday night. It's Monday night.
Monday night, exactly.
The 7th. And, you know, I was so discouraged with, one of the local newspapers had the referendum in a big headline, "It's the 7th." The referendum is the 15th. You know, you know how hard I've been working on trying to improve voter turnout, and when I see a mistake in a paper like that, it makes me cringe to have the wrong date for the referendum. The town meeting is Monday, the 7th. The referendum is Tuesday, the 15th.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
The town meeting will be at the high school.
It will.
So those people go to the right.
Town meeting is at the high school, right.
The referendum, just one voting.
One voting place, the rec center on Linsley, yes. So there we go.
Oh, Mary, yes.
I just have to respond. So I have been supporting and speaking out in favor of the fire chief, who is the expert in favor of his plan for months now. And his plan reflects the needs in the department. And his plan is to hire eight firemen paramedics and to purchase two fire apparatus in a lease purchase, lease-to-purchase. So as the budget process has unfolded, and with the financial mess up at the state and the uncertainty up there, the phase-in of the eight paramedics became the topic. So that's why, it's not that I don't favor, I've been talking about hiring two firemen paramedics, because I think we can afford it. We have $140,000 in a separate line item, and it's $250,000 around to hire two firemen paramedics. So that leaves $110,000, and the math is .0387. So I, you know, I think it's affordable. I mean, I'd be willing to pay an extra, you know, maybe like $9 in my taxes to have two firemen paramedics. So, but anyway, so as, like I said, as the budget process unfolded, it was clear that eight firemen paramedics were not going to be hired. So then, what is reasonable? So phasing in, like the union president said, phasing in the firemen paramedics. And so that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. It's my understanding that the chief's plan is really to hire 16. Am I wrong? Eight, one year, yeah, eight one year, and then eight the next year to Matt.
It's not going to happen.
But that is, that was the original plan as presented, I believe. Okay. I just want to say one more thing. You know, selectmen, Bill Piper and I have been working with the police chief and some others in town on the special recognition for the 75th anniversary of the police department in the parade this year, and it's going to be nice. And I just want to remind people to come to the parade, especially in light of what happened last night. You know, when we march on Maple Avenue, that half mile before the green, it's almost empty. And I would just love it if a lot of people, especially in the Montoweezy area, could just show up this year, because that unit's going to be marching with this banner that Bill and I have put together to acknowledge the 75th anniversary. And it would be nice to see, you know, the whole route lined with people to acknowledge our first responders, our police and firefighters this year. So I just want to remind everybody, our next meeting's not until June, so that the parade is Saturday, the 26th. So come to the parade and applaud our first responders, however many there are.
Okay, thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
All right.
I can't take any design credit. I think it was all, I have no artistic or design talent, so I have to give Sally credit.
You've been very helpful. You've been helpful, Bill.
How good the banner looks.
You've been very helpful, Bill.
All right, any other comments? All right, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. Second? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for those watching on North Haven TV. Have a good evening.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.